Good evening, I'm calling to order the Columbia County Board of Commissioners, August 20th, 2024, meeting to order. Ask Commissioner Keraway to open us with the invitation.
Bow our heads. Heavenly Father, thank you for today and for the many blessings you have given our community. As we meet today, guide our thoughts and decisions and let our work be pleasing. I ask these things.
Please stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America. The republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, visible, liberty and justice for all.
At the record show, we have a full quorum of commissioners. Commissioners, you have two sets of meetings in your minutes, one from the August 6, 2024, Board of Commissioners meeting, and the other from the August 6, 2024, Village Public Hearing. I'll accept one motion to approve them all, if you've had a chance to review them and you agree.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to accept both sets of minutes as presented.
Second.
Questions? Raise your right hand. Motion carries. Johnson, any changes to our agenda?
Ready for your approval, Mr. Chairman.
Special recognitions, and we do have a consent agenda. Commissioners, the items on this agenda have been through the necessary committees and received the necessary votes to be placed on this consent agenda, so if they still meet with your approval, I'll accept a motion to approve them all.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve the entire consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. On to the debate, and I believe Commissioner Keraway, you have the first item.
Resolution 24, 2441, I make a motion to approve the second reading for resolution 24-41, at fee scheduled for water utility, the second reading.
Second.
This is addition of a larger one and a half and two inch meter for residential cases. Currently, we do not have a fee for those. We are starting to see requests for those size meters, add that fee to it.
It's been read twice now, and voted on twice, or any other question? All in favor, raise your right hand. On to Commissioner Couch, you have the next item.
Yes, sir, I'd like to make a motion to approve the request for the applicant to withdraw with prejudice for rezoning RZ 24-0801.
Second.
Explain with prejudice.
Let the attorney explain prejudice.
Prejudice, sorry.
They'd have to wait six months to come back to apply.
And without prejudice would be.
Come back tomorrow.
They can come back tomorrow, so the more restrictive of the two is with prejudice, which is what the motion is for. Okay, thank you.
Any questions? As a general rule, whenever somebody asks to withdraw, we let them withdraw, so. Motion second floor, all in favor, raise your right hand. Wrong. Any legal matters?
Illegal matters.
There's no request for review by committee.
No, sir.
We have a public comments section, and a lot of folks have asked to speak. So I'm gonna move the agenda, we're gonna complete the executive session first, so folks can speak as long as they like, once we finish. So go to the executive session first, then go into public speaking and comments. Accept a motion to go into executive session?
Make a motion to go into executive session.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Go into executive session. We'll be right back. Do we have to vote to come back in?
No.
For as long as we did it.
He called me back to order, Mr. Chairman, we're good to go.
Yep, two property matters. Commissioner Keraway, you have those.
Yes, sir, M1A, I make a motion to approve eighteen thousand dollars to Robert and Anita Webb, parcel 067019, for eighteen thousand seven hundred dollars. Parcel 060009, and nine hundred dollar parcel 060010, to Patricia Smith, to obtain right-of-way indoor easements for the Hereford Farm Road widening project.
Eighteen thousand or eighteen thousand eight hundred on the first one?
Thousand eight hundred.
Second.
This is parcels one hundred and twenty out of a total of about forty-five percent, so we have 282 total, we've done one hundred and twenty, forty-five percent done.
Questions? All in favor, raise your right hand.
M1B, I make a motion to approve fifty-three thousand seven hundred and eighteen dollars parcel 073016, and twelve thousand, twenty-one thousand five hundred and seventy-one dollars parcel 073001, for rent supplement and relocation moving expense for the Hereford Farm Road project.
Second.
As mentioned, these are rent supplement payments and moving expenses paid to tenants of properties that we've had to purchase.
Pay for the moving of tenants?
Correct, and supplement their rent for making the move.
Part of the law.
Yep. Part procedure.
Sorry?
G dot procedure and part of the law.
Folks, we've got a motion second, all in favor, raise your right hand. Periods. Backing up to the public comments and participation. I do have a list, and if you're here, I'll call them in the order that I received, and which I think so earlier filed. Up, just state your name and address for the record, and please, five minutes to say what you want to say. Rodney Byrd.
Eight thirty Rockford Drive. Uh, have your time. Guys already have. Our presentation will be generated and presented for the public by the planning committee. My time start over?
There you go, go ahead, go ahead.
Our presentation will be based only on the facts as stated in the zoning application of the applicant, which were generated and presented for the public by the planning committee on August 1st, 2024. Additional figures referenced were sent via email, additional copies are available. In the work session in City of Harlem, January 23rd, 2020, this was turned down. Name of Harlem, January 2020, received a letter. Name of Rens, April 2019, received a letter. Engle Side Drive currently has issues, come back to that. We respectfully ask that the commission please follow along. Statements from the application is a narrative from the applicant that was not available for us to see. In this narrative, it was given home, there were a lot of details that we weren't allowed to see. Where is this narrative? Their narrative states that there was lengthy meetings with applicant. Was there a member from or there with that meeting while they were building their rapport? Now, we're coming down to development. On page one, paragraph one, included with the request is a narrative describing the development of the overall parcel. Page one, paragraph three, per the provided narrative, the applicant intends to convert the existing home on site into an office. Page one, paragraph four, the buffers are proposed to be natural per narrative without any fencing proposed. Page two, paragraph three, ministry intends to use this property as a place of worship and as a retreat to members and guests that are seeking a deeper relationship from Christ. Property will serve as a facility for weekly meetings and church fellowship activities. Ministry intends to have staff members on site twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, as caretakers of the property, all included in the application. Page two, paragraph five, from the narrative. I see the, I'm getting that here, narrative, 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 never got a chance to see the narrative. Residents contest that there were too many unknown details, variables, and dependent activities, in addition to requesting the ability to have the upwards of ninety-six individuals staying overnight, per page two, paragraph three, page two, paragraph five, and page three, paragraph one. City made the comment that it would be unable to enforce a strict number of individuals on that site. We contest that if there's, if they're unable to enforce the number of individuals, it's also gonna be hard for them to enforce with those individuals are protected by the Fair Housing Act. So if you can't enforce the number, how can you enforce that they're protected by the Fair Housing Act?
Mind turning the phone off?
Okay, so with the, well, so the applicant asked for a small amount of cab, a small amount of cabins, six, with a possible twelve, six to eight individuals in those cabins, leads to ninety-six, to our number of ninety-six. In order for us to use that number of ninety-six, we have to use it as the minimal, as the board did not, the board did not determine that it would be a high number, and this number is the only number that we could deal with. Once you get to sixteen people, it goes from being a church to being a group home. And we say, we can say group home confidently because of the mission of this organization. I'm not gonna call it a church. The reason why I say call it an organization is because they don't have their taxes for this year, so if their taxes for this year say that they have a surplus of money, and they're no longer nonprofit, and they can no longer be considered a church. I'm saying all of this because a lot of the things that were written in the papers that were provided to us was already afforded to the planning commission, but they did not read it. Grove Towne County Code is right there, and they did not read it. There were four individuals that came up and spoke in a post, in opposition of this, and no one spoke for it, and the owner of the house was not there, and they still approved it, which means they're either not reading, or they have arterial motives. I can't say one or the other, but I would really like to have an internal investigation. Questions?
No, sir. Deidra Stevens? Now, right? Mark Hullum? Is she on the list? Amanda? Here, come on down. State your name and address for the record, please take five minutes.
Okay, thank you. Um, so what I prepared to write is something that I prepared a few days ago, so it wasn't
Give me a favor, just state your name.
Oh, yes, my name is Kendall Hullum, and my address is eleven thirty-one Old Lewis Phil Road. Thank you. Good evening, my name is Kendall Hullum, and today I'm speaking on behalf of myself and the fellow residents in the surrounding area of Rockford Drive and Hullum Drive. When each of us first heard of One Four Three Ministries, our first impressions were that wonderful and much-needed work was being done, and honestly, we think it's absolutely amazing that the organization is growing and reaching more people in need, most especially at a time in our world where drugs, sex trafficking, identity confusion, homelessness, perversion, et cetera, seem to have been accepted as part of our new normal. Honestly, we need more places available and accessible where societies lost, broken, and wounded are embraced and nurtured as they navigate the path to purpose and conviction. Not everyone understands the fortitude required to be successful in recovery. What we are able to discern from multiple groups is that One Four Three wants to build and operate a place of healing and worship, so member support, funds, high-level connections seem to be available to do exactly that. But residents in the area have a different challenge. From what we've gathered most, if not all, are families. Now, their battle looks different than One Four Three's program participants. As a matter of fact, their battle is probably even more challenging than recovery. In a society that is breaking away from long-lasting marriages, these residents are fighting for marriage and family life. They are fighting for the economic, and they're actually breaking away from long lasting marriages, these residents are fighting economic and societal challenges of building a lifelong marriage. Added to that is the challenge of raising children and nurturing their faith, hope, and a way ahead that will lead them into a future filled with love, hope, pride, and as they enter, as they enter into adulthood. Now, keep in mind that every parent wants the very best for their children. Although most of us do the best that we can, chances are great that becoming a millionaire with great connections is not going to be the norm. So the goal for most, goal for most people is to carefully pick a good community and buy or build a family home where a specific structure is promised and quality education is available. Not everything can be controlled, but I would have to say that the odds are probably better that way. When you buy a home in a rapidly growing community, things will change as growth ensues. So it's important to be able to rely on the word of our local leaders when they say zoning matters. I think most of us know when we buy on the edge of a zoning boundary that zoning may change to meet the various needs of the area. So we rely on our elected officials to protect that structure and be very reasonable with the changes. Pretty much any change impacts the surrounding area in one way or another. So as buyers, selecting a property in the middle of a zoning area is the best opportunity you have to protect the integrity of the neighborhood. So making a good zoning choice is a large part of protecting the largest investments that families typically make. In this case, a well-connected million-dollar church, charity, or business, I may say, has chosen to purchase a property that has residential lots on every boundary of the property. Not only was it purchased with the intent of putting a non-residential enterprise into the middle of a residential zoning block, they seem to have done it with very deceptive behaviors, so I'm, I'm not exactly sure how prioritizing the challenges of recovery over the challenges of marriage and family values is appropriate for a faith-based business. A One Four Three member actually stated that they had faced neighborhood challenges before, so we can only assume that One Four Three makes it some kind of practice to purchase properties in residential areas to expand their business. Is it appropriate for a million-dollar faith-based business to continuously force themselves into residential neighborhoods? You have to assume that they do it knowing full well that it will put tremendous stress on families to worry about fighting a million-dollar company to protect their zoning and their investment, most especially when their treasurer is a well-placed attorney. Ultimately, I guess it's going to be up to the county to stand tall and stand behind zoning because zoning matters, or to cave and give in to those well-placed connections within the county, and give them what they want because they are taking care of each other. I don't know, but from our point of view, it just doesn't look like a godly situation had been created over there in our residential community. And what a shame, honestly, because it looks like both of us are trying to do really good things. We sincerely hope that our county leadership stands behind the fact that zoning matters, and if not, then we guess it's a clear message to all of us that we too can have a million-dollar business, move in next door, and can't do anything about it unless we want to spend our life savings trying to fight Goliath in court, and that would be very unfortunate. Thank you.
Thanks, Kendall. Mark, you want to speak now?
Mark Hullum, eleven thirty-one Old Lewis Phil Road. I guess since this has changed from the application and the zoning, the more of, I mean, the decision's already been made, they withdrew and whatnot, is it okay to ask questions? And, I mean, they'll be brief, and I only have a few, okay? On the original application, they had said it was a church, and then it went campground church, and then it went campground church, group home, so I guess the question is, how vague, since they start with a place of worship, and then it kind of grows, and you decide, if you decide with S1 with, I guess, stipulations or whatnot, how much can they do, how can they, can they just keep growing and growing? You know, the operator, I mean, do they have to come in each time and apply to add to that, or, I don't know how that works?
Matt, can you speak to the current zoning, what they can and can't do now?
So currently, it's residential, so it's for residential purposes only. RA zoning, so two and a half acre lots, they could subdivide the area, sell houses, build houses, residential today.
And, I'm sorry, is there covenants that are within that?
If there's covenants, that's a private issue, the county does not get involved.
HOAs are not county, that's.
Not enforce covenants.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Zoning, we can enforce, so.
Okay.
It is residential, two and a half acre lots, at the smallest size. S1 zoning, people misconstrue what S1 means, they think it's a commercial zoning that's open to everything, it's actually the exact opposite. S1 zoning is a very confined zone. Basically says, if you're asked for a church, and this board says you can have a church, that's all you can ever have. It's even specific to the site plan that's shown, so if they say, I'm gonna build a church here with this parking, that's the only thing they can do. Any change beyond that requires this board to approve it, another process like this. So as they go through their rezoning process, sometimes you see this morph, because they come in asking for one thing, and then we find out as we question them, that their idea is to do more. So as we question them, they start saying, well, I need to add that to my zoning.
Gotcha.
It kind of morphs as we go through the process.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
As we're doing our homework, trying to figure out what we should say to this body, we really pull out of them what they're really trying to do. That's how it kind of morphs.
I understand, and so I watched the video of the first meeting, I wasn't aware because we, I mean, the sign was placed odd area, and we weren't able to know what was going on till late, but I noticed that in the first meeting that it wasn't just a place of worship, though. So they said worship campground, and then they kind of went over the group home thing. So, so if you were to do the S1, it would, that would be the restrictive area of just them three things that was mentioned, correct?
Correct.
And then they'd have to come in and reapply to add to that? Okay, thank you.
Correct.
Okay.
But then currently, without zoning, they can build houses, right?
Build houses, they can build houses, that's it.
They can have up to six non-resi, help me with the law.
So, yeah, code, code will allow a home of up to six people in it, so. Two and a half acre lot can have a house on it, also have an ancillary dwelling, those happen all the time, so a two and a half acre lot could actually have two houses on it, each house could have up to six people in it. Could have twelve people per lot.
Which they already have the approval to do that.
That, there's no, that's, that's just, anybody can do that, you can do it on your own, if you guys can do it.
I can do it because I had to have a certain road frontage, that not.
To an ancillary dwelling, yeah, yeah, so there's, there's requirements to have access to roads, yes, but that's, that's not part of zoning, that's just, that's just your planter view process, that's not a zoning issue.
So.
It is a zoning condition, it's not something that has to come from this board, the zoning says you must have road frontage, amount, they can do that, there's no change.
So they've already went through that process to get that approved?
Right now, they just, they just have a.
Oh, it's open, they can do that anyway.
Yeah, that's right.
And they can put as many home, any, each, they can subdivide in two point five?
Correct. So they can do, now, now, they would have to put roads and stuff in to get a lot of lots, code require, only allows for four parcels to be subdivided, take one big parcel, you can only subdivide it into four, unless you start building a road network.
Okay.
They would do that, that revolves, that involves interview processes, building the road, there's a lot more that goes on to it, but if they were just to go out there and have road frontage in four lots and put two houses per lot, they can do that.
They can build a subdivision.
They could, they could.
Right now.
Like, I don't know how many acres you have.
Well, yeah, they were bragging about they could do that already, so, yeah, I guess, okay, good to know. So how many times can they apply? I know they have to wait six months in this one, how many times can they apply? Is there a limit?
I don't think so.
Same person can apply over and over and over?
They get denied or prejudiced.
Yeah, so they're gonna wear us out every six months, okay. It's been a lot, I'm gonna tell y'all, these families, oh, it's been a lot, we went through this, this week, I was in Jacksonville when I heard about it, luckily, a neighbor let us know, and, you know, there's something wrong with the process to put one little sign out there, and nobody around the adjacent area, all these people, I guarantee you, there was only four families that really knew what was going on at the time, and then, you know, it looked like they only did a, the bare minimum, fifteen days to place the sign and all that. It, you know, the first impression, it means a lot, and everybody knows that, when you come and you approach somebody, the first impression means a lot. Their first impression was horrible, and, so, the backlash they got from it, it's because of them. I just want to say that, this, this has been a draining, and Allison, I really wish you would have kind of come and stepped foot on the properties around there, we've met, we have made some good friends now, that we, you know, thank God, we would have never known, but six months from now, let's say five and a half, maybe come down Rockford, kind of talk to everybody, and, because they're gonna apply again, they told us over and over, they're gonna keep doing it, and, and I'm fully aware of the people that are behind it and with it, good people there too, but.
I would love to come visit with you guys anytime, just let me know, I've responded to all the emails and phone calls, and I would look forward to it.
Yeah, absolutely, I mean, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, yeah, we did.
Don't tell the chairman.
One of the big things, the narrative, everybody, like, we hate One Four Three, and we hate the, what their work is, and I've, I've contributed to them, I'm, I'm sorry, I've contributed to them, you know, I got family members that are deeply involved with it, but the sneakiness that was applied in this case was horrible, and like I said, the first impression that they gave was terrible.
Mark, I don't, I don't, I don't think they, I think, I can see how, how it can appear that way.
Yeah.
But I don't think on the part of One Four Three, that, that's the, county goes and puts those out, I don't, I don't think it was intended to be that way, I think there's, listen, just say this real quickly.
Sure.
I don't want to be here all night long, but I've been in this exact position myself, on Chamberlain Road.
Yes, sir.
Where they, where they did.
I remember.
And I didn't like it.
Yeah.
And it passed because they have federal rights, they, they can do that, I didn't know that at the time, but we never had any problem, and they were, they were probably better neighbors than the people that lived in it, but, so I, I understand that, but I can tell you, I don't feel like anybody was trying to put one over on anybody, I really don't. That, that would matter, like Allison, I drove out there on Saturday myself, because I, I'd do better if I see it.
Yeah.
And it really, it really made a difference, because you could see where the houses are, and all that stuff, and it changed, and I actually stopped and talked to two people that live on Rockford.
Okay.
And one of them, well, actually, both of them did not have a problem. And I asked, could I, listen, it doesn't ma, it doesn't matter, it happened, I asked could I use their name, they said they'd rather not, but, but, everybody, nobody's gonna welcome that, say, hey, put this in my, put this around me, particularly when they don't understand, and probably could have done a better job of talking to people about it, but I, but even still, I'm not sure that everybody would have.
And, and I can understand you saying that, but the only reason, I mean, there's, we're just not fabricating or thinking, because originally, they had, you know, posted a welcome letter out, I think in Rens and in Harlem, and they didn't do that this time, so of course, that looks, you know, they, they did the process different, so, you know, you say, why, why would they do it different? And then, you know, I have family members that, actually associate pastor, that we talked to very often, and never was a mention of that, so there's some of them things, as far as with the process of the signage and whatnot, it just started looking, you know, very suspicious, and with you saying, you know, that happened to you, and over off Chamberlain, and they're better neighbors than whatnot, was it a recovery?
Yeah, it was.
Yeah.
I didn't even know, you know, I was like, I was so busy working on my back in living, I wasn't worried about.
Yeah, no, I understand, and it's.
So I understand that, that's why I wanted to, I wanted to see it.
Yeah.
You know, and I'm not, I'm not trying to talk you, change your mind, I just wanted you to know that I don't think anybody was trying to pull, pull over your Isaac from the standpoint of signage out there.
And, and really, it doesn't, doesn't really matter, at the end of the day, it's really, you know, what they're trying to do, and, and, you know, the facts of that, but, you know, I was, it was, it was me speaking on the, the part of the first impression, and it wasn't good, and all these residents, they, you know, it wasn't good at all. It wasn't good, and all these residents, they, you know, it wasn't good at all. As far as better neighbors and whatnot, I mean, we can pull hair on that.
I'm bad at those neighbors, we're, we're talking about different things.
I mean, but, well, I appreciate you, I appreciate you, Mike. I mean, you know, I've known you for a little while and, but five and a half months from now, six months from now, I'm gonna come, we're gonna battle it again.
My sense, they withdrew to work it out.
Why did they withdraw? I can't, what was the reason? They, do they, did they?
I could be wrong.
They didn't give a reason on withdrawal formally.
Email asking to withdraw, they didn't tell why.
Hmm.
My understanding is that there will be no reapplication, you know.
What's that, I'm sorry?
There will be no future application for, I'm not certain.
Yeah. They're able to get, oh, one more question, I'm sorry. On the homes, they can rent them out, that's just like, they can build it, is it, anybody can, they can rent them out, sell them and all, lots and all that?
That's, that's just.
I'm sitting on a gold mine, didn't know it.
You are, so, two and a half acres, if you wanted to go smaller lots, you'd have to come through this process and ask for changes zoning, but yes.
Know a little bit about the process.
Acres you have, but can absolutely sell those lots and build houses on them, and that's, and that's meeting the current code. And that's just going through staff approval, does not require this board at all.
Okay, one last question. Y'all, how do y'all feel about residential areas and keeping them rural and the rural areas, pockets of rural areas? Or, you know, diluting them with things like this? In, in a church and worship centers, it's not a bad thing, but it does change the, the complexity or the, the area. Are y'all, you know, really for like keeping business in business? And because there's a church on every corner, I mean, we got a lot of churches, which.
We need a lot of Jesus.
Huh?
We need a lot of Jesus.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, absolutely, no doubt about it. But I was just wondering how you, what, what the opinion was on.
When it comes to this, we do the best we can.
Yeah.
It's, depends, property owners have rights. And as much as folks, like, guys don't want to hear this, your rights don't transfer to their property. So they have rights by the constitution to profit from their property. It's probably the biggest thing we deal with.
They have the what, say it again?
Constitution guarantees a, a property owner right to profit from their property, whatever the case may be. And so the greatest thing we battle is folks come out, they do not want this next to them. They don't own the property. So I mean, that's, that is the great balance, I mean.
And that's what was kind of odd too, that he, when they, when they applied for this, they didn't own the property either. They, they, they were, they were intending to buy it, but it was applied for before they bought the property. I thought that was kind of.
That's generally the way it is, Mark.
That's typical.
Yeah, really?
Yeah.
They know they're gonna get it, they go ahead and apply, but oh, it doesn't matter if, yeah, I see.
Exactly.
Oh, okay.
It's the exact opposite, they typically apply for the zoning that way, if they don't get it, they have not bought the property, waste their, their money. So most people that do this on a regular basis, it's get it under contract, apply for zoning, if zoning passes, they complete the contract. If zoning fails, they walk away.
Yeah.
No money spent.
Thank y'all for your time, I'm gonna come sit in here just to watch this proceeding, I like this, thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks for clarification, something Mr. Slatter said. So if, if this goes away tonight and they don't come back for rezoning, it being RA, they, they can put houses on it without coming back for rezoning, because it's RA. The, the lots would be minimum of two and a half acres.
Correct.
And they don't have to put in paved roads and all that stuff, as long as there's only four. They can be four, four.
That's right.
Parcels on a dirt road.
Right.
Or paved road, then you can have more if it was a paved road.
Doesn't even have to be a road, it can be through an easement.
Okay.
Our code differs, so four lots, you can use an access, once you start getting above that, it requires roads, which can be private roads, it can't be a county road. But steps into the 30-foot wide access and gets a little more involved. At that point, yes, they come to staff with plans they have to go through. But if they were to draw a line across, across their property and make four lots, they could go out there and build four houses on each lot. And then ask for an ancillary dwelling, which y'all, y'all see these ancillary dwellings on a regular basis, build another house on every lot, so.
That's eight houses.
That's eight houses.
I'm six people per house.
Correct.
So there could be 48 people without anything coming in front of us.
And then that's, doesn't just apply to RA, that's any residential zoning district, anywhere. Long as they, as long as there's room on the lot for the ancillary dwelling and it meets the code for that, which the RA zoning district, it absolutely does. You can have up to two houses per lot.
And so how big is, how big is this parcel we're talking about? They're 20 divided by two and a half, there could be more than four if they did the infrastructure, they could be.
You don't have to have the infrastructure though.
Right.
Get expensive then.
Right, you're down to wells, you're down to septic systems, so there's, there's more to it than just saying, I'm gonna do it. Gotta have the, the health department's gotta come out and verify that the septic system will work for multiple houses, if that's what they choose to do. Gotta have wells to provide water, if there's not a water system out there.
It's not an automatic.
No, it's not, there's, there's code that to follow. My point is, they don't have to come back in front of this board for a zoning change just to build houses. That could happen in Jones Creek, it could happen in Westlake, it could happen in River Island, that's just the way the zoning works.
And they can rent them as they wish.
That's correct, there's nothing in our code prevents somebody from renting a house.
Tiffany Brazel? Her? Her? I'm gonna assume she approves of you taking her spots.
You told me to, so I gotta listen.
This is recorded, so be careful, let's record these meetings.
My name's Chris Brazel, I live at, Evan Rockford. Go for West Robinson Avenue. Access to county now for, so far, our dreams have been accomplished. Didn't happen. Ain't able. Always had a vision. Peaceful, quiet ambiance of a Wednesday nights, Wednesday summer night. And we found this property after going through earlier, I'm very, very familiar with state and law. Tendency offer. Contract. We had one fall through on us. And, you know, that was, maybe that was, you know, God's plan because we found the property that we have now. We envisioned our kids playing, we envisioned how our house was gonna sit on this property, envisioned all these things. The, the rezoning request was not one of them. My brother got out of prison, substance abuse, firearms, just got done going to their plum branch location. Like a, a place that they gotta go do hard detox and they come out of there and then they get involved with some of the other programs that they offer. I, I wouldn't trust my brother to watch the grass. Gonna get his life together. Hey, when I see that he can do what he wants. I'll be willing to open myself up and have a. Doesn't get to do. And being full aware of what drugs can do to people, I know the good and I know the bad. And that definitely urged a lot of my neighbors to go against this proposed idea. They say, well, where else should they go? What's another option? You know, you would think that the county would have, you know, buildings or an idea or a plan to accommodate this. Just because these people want to go out into the woods and, you know, create it on their own out there, doesn't always mean that's the best for the residents of Columbia County or for that community. We didn't all just all of a sudden decide to turn on 143 ministries. Didn't decide to just hate their cause and go against them and disrupt everything that they wanted to do. Matter of fact, everybody was for it. But as we did our own legwork, our own investigations, just like you guys know people in powerful positions or not powerful positions. We have people too, and what we found out was freaking disgusting, absolutely disgusting. You know, I just listened to you say, it may appear, don't, I, I can't stand when someone asks me not to believe my lying eyes. All separately, had independent concerns, followed those concerns. And what was so outrageous is that we all came back to the same thing. Even down to the deal for the land to be sold, you know. There's over a half a dozen police reports of a man that's elderly, elderly, with dementia, and his caregiver, talking about suicide. He has no power of attorney, how do you, how do you, how do you sign agreement on this? Taking, is taking advantage of somebody that has a disability. I don't care how you try to explain it to me, that is what's going on, it's a fact, I wouldn't sit up here and lie. On the side, I'll show you all the facts. When I did the dates, did all the dates, from the time that the application was notarized, from the time that the MLS listing was changed to pending. A lot of people don't know the whole story and everybody's arguing, I'll tell you the story. It was done as quick as possible to avoid the backlash from wanting to do it. Why wouldn't it happen in Rens and it happened in Harlem? What is the bare minimum we can do to try and get a positive outcome without disrupting the community? At all. And what we found was that the, that the closing date was the 26th. Now, anybody familiar with real estate knows that a deal doesn't close about seven, 10, 12 days. So for all parties, get their paperwork together, the closing attorneys, and to be able to do a deal on the 23rd, close on the 26th, and then 15 days, to be exact, that you guys had the planning meeting? And then you also didn't have a representative for 143. You know, you guys are supposed to represent us, you're an elected official. And when people stand up in opposition, we shouldn't even been at this part, we should have been at the planning. Someone is opposed to it, and to send it on through up to you guys, it looks so weird. It doesn't look, it looks, it looks like by, by design. And this is just some of the things that we found through the whole process of trying to figure out who the organization is, what is actually gonna be put there. And if this continues, it's gonna happen to somebody else. Somebody else who lives in a neighborhood that's constantly distracted, going out of the entrance of the neighborhood because their kids are yelling and you're trying to go, the hustle, the bustle, didn't see the sign. Happens that easy, a whole neighborhood, believe that, didn't really know until we started to do the legwork that was needed to find out what's coming to the community. And when that legwork took off, boy, did we find out some things that were not good, not good at all. And I wish that you all would consider moving forward, excuse me. How do I say this? I wish that moving forward, you guys would, Allison, I have to commend you. You answered questions that were needed, they were hard questions, people emailed you, bonded, taken things into consideration. But these type of decisions impact people tremendously, tremendously. Could you imagine, it took me 10 years to get to the point where I wanted to buy land to put my family in a house, 10 years. Somebody has an idea that they want to put something somewhere, that's just my story. That neighborhood has, does anybody know how many people we have in that neighborhood? Let's say there's 60 people in that neighborhood, they had dreams, they had plans, they built their homes. And all I'm asking you guys is to understand that we're not dumb. And I know y'all can tell that we're not dumb, we're passionate about the neighborhood that we live in. When you have a matter of this magnitude, it would behoove somebody to pay a little more attention about the process and how it's going. Because whether it appears, airway, if it appears that something was done wrong, it's gonna piss the community off. Can explain it away, a prime example, if we're making allegations against this corporation that are inappropriate and don't have any, you know, truth to it. Hey, why doesn't that guy invite the 95-year-old dementia patient and let him explain everything so that we all can be at ease? So that the community is comfortable with who 143 is. Transparency altogether is gonna help you guys in your decisions and it's gonna help the citizens try to understand from their angle. And I feel like there's too much separation through this. I hope that you guys involve the citizens a little more than they did in this process, and it won't happen to somebody else moving down the road.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Buffy Berkman? John and Nadine McAfee? McAfee? Ken, but what I'm gonna ask is if you have more information to give instead of. Yes, ma'am, oh, come on down, but what I'm asking is, let's have folks who've asked to speak, just if you have, if you're just gonna give the same point, we, we hear you.
My name is Judy Horn, my husband is out of town, we live at 58. 5820, 5820 for Rockford Drive. You've seen it on the news, every time you see it on the news, you see my house. My house is the one that's been shown on the news for the last two weeks. So I'm across the street. My thing is, I, I was born and raised Columbia County, moved to Richmond County for 20 years, decided to come back to Columbia County to our forever home. Now we are across the street and this is what we got to look at. It's been, I mean, all now, since they've started, it's just traffic, 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 in and out, in and out, in and out. And I don't have, I, I'm a Christian and, and I try to do my part, I pay my tithes to churches and, and I'm sure everybody else do their jobs. My thing is, it's not about the church, it's about what the church is doing. And it's about the people that they're saying that they're ministering to help. These are strangers that's gonna be living together. These are drug addicts and alcoholics, and they're gonna be living together. And I can't see them sitting beside, around in those woods, sitting around the campfire singing, "Kumariya" every night together. It's gonna be some fighting, it's gonna be some them getting mad, it's gonna be some them being able to walk off that property whenever they get ready. And when they walk off that property, my house might be the first one they walk to, because I'm the closest. And it's another neighbor who's really close to them. And that's just the part I don't want. We, we have a cute community, I know you've seen it on television, everybody got a golf cart, everybody rides their golf cart constantly. The kids can ride on their own without the parents, because that's just the type of community that we've moved into. And that's, we made a, it was a big decision to move out there because I'm from Appleling and, and, and that's where I've been. And then moving over to there, to Growtown, I thought we were in a safe, back to Columbia County, in a safe neighborhood. Not saying Richmond County was bad at all, because we loved it. But it's just the fact that just the type of people that's gonna be there and having, being able to do what they want to and walk around any way they want to. And so now, it's like we've always had an alarm system, but we never really turn it on. Now it's like, don't leave home without turning the alarm on, you know? And they're already, and this might be a little bit off, but they've, they've done a GoFundMe for these dogs that they say they, they rescued. Well, I can show you all on the camera every night, the dogs are in my yard. And they're not taking care of these dogs, the dogs are on my porch, drinking my dog's water. And, you know, so they're already, okay, but they're saying that they, they raised money to rescue these dogs. And I know Mr. Will, Mr. Lester Williams had like four dogs over their own property. So I don't know where these dogs came from. But just, I mean, you can't even control two dogs, how you gonna control drug addicts and alcoholics? And, and we, everybody probably got one in their family, but I just don't want them all around mine. And that's, that's what I got to say, it's just a matter of people that they're gonna be owning property, that's gonna be walking our neighborhood. Because, and all, and we, and I've been talked about and everybody else on Rockford Drive has been talked about. But let them try to come in their property and see what they have to say. So thank you for your time. And I was here on August 1st, because I saw the sign first and took a picture of it and let the rest of the neighborhood see it, because like I said, it's across the street from my house. When I got, when we came, my husband and I, and two other people spoke first. It was until the last person came up and he was friends with, with, he was friends with one of the person from 143 or one, only commissioner or something. That's how we knew about what was gonna be on it, it just wasn't a house of worship which is on the sign. It was a whole lot of other stuff too. So, thank y'all.
Samuel, I don't want to butcher your last name. Andrew? About, oh, I spoke. Amanda Holm, oh my, Amanda here? Amanda Holm? Dylan Farmer? Absolutely.
Members of Rockford Drive, um, for having us and meeting with us.
We'll just state your name and address for the record.
Haley Farmer.
Dylan Farmer, 5823 Rockford Drive. We're the property directly west of what they're trying to do.
So I'm sitting here tonight. I didn't intend to speak, but I do now. Um, for bringing up some great points. I see that you are up to bat to, um, not clear their name because they have a good name. They're doing a good thing. But are you up to bat for us as well? Are you trying to make sure that we're safe? Are you trying to make sure that the laws are followed and our privacy is safe as well? That's a genuine question, by the way.
Of course.
As through this whole process, these last two weeks, it's been terrible. Being right next door to it and having no idea other than a sign in the, in the driveway, tough. And you said you've been through it. That's a scary feeling. Fear of the unknown. And if you haven't experienced that, experienced that, I hope you don't. Because it's scary, especially when you're trying to start a family for the first time. So I hope and I pray that y'all are up to bat for us, batting for our name, for our area. We want growth too, but we want it the right way. We want what's best for the neighborhood. We want what's best for Grove Town, Columbia County, Harlem. I grew up in Harlem. We want nothing but good things. Thank God that things are changing, and Harlem has made a name for itself. But it's time for us to focus on our residents, not necessarily the growth at this point. Need better communication from our chairman, our districts. We need active. Because it was rough. It's been rough. And I'm not saying that it's over now because we don't know what the future holds. We're not that good, okay? So I just, we just ask for better communication. That was... Thank you for your time.
Thank y'all.
I have a question. I've heard, heard several folks ask about communication or feeling like they weren't communicated with. Did, at some point during this, did we fail to communicate according to code and what's expected for notifications?
Right, and that's standard protocol. I'm sorry? Got a question?
I was just confirming that we followed all of our...
The state law dictates how we advertise. There was advertisement in the paper for this, obviously the sign that was mentioned, um, as well as our website. Entire packet is listed on our website for any and all to read, so, um, actually Augusta Press who was here will actually publish our applications prior to me even seeing them, receiving them, because they pull them off our website. Application comes in, staff uploads it to the website almost immediately. It's out there for the public to start looking at then. As our, as we develop the, the staff report, website gets updated for all that information to be seen. And you have to go to it to get it. We don't have a way of pushing it to every individual property.
And that includes the quote unquote narrative?
Correct.
Right.
Correct.
Sandra Maran?
581 Huntington Drive. Yes, I'm really late. Death of my husband, so I had no idea any of this was going on. Uh, we moved to Columbia County when Grove Town was a blinking light. I prefer that it stayed that way. Away, this is more developed than ever we thought. We don't seem to always get a choice about how the development is going to go. Uh, like when Gate 6 opened, counted traffic and the noise that I hear. My house, unbelievable. I requested speed bumps on my particular road. I didn't feel safe walking to the mailbox. Speed that people drive. I know I have no say about what anybody does on their property. But it does affect me, especially noise. I'm sure you're all aware of a current noise issue that has gone on. Uh, basically, we're told... Well, when noise vibrates your windows or it's at 3 o'clock in the morning, tough to say this is a nice community. Uh, since we moved in, I've been, we've lived here 30 years. We'd like to develop our property just like anyone else. It's basically same as been for 30 years. I have a change in my life. Maybe I would like to make changes on my property too. One of the things I've wanted, here's maybe back to 30 years, county water. The property that on Rockford Drive does have access to county water. I assume that changes how many houses could be put on property when they have access to county water. Um, basically, I've been told, no, you're not on the plan. When Harlem was still in charge, that next phase, next phase, Harlem sold the water management to Columbia County. Haven't heard from you when my phase is going to be. So I'm not able to develop my property because you need water. I've already had one well fail. I don't have the money to dig another well. County won't let me pay for the 1,000 feet to get access to my property because... So I'm on a... I won't. And according to Columbia County. Um, I've always grown up with wells and septic tanks. They are not the friendliest things at any time. My concern, however the zoning goes, that the amount of septic that would be put on the property affects the condition of my well because everything, all the septic system, that... Whatever that is, all affecting that. Most of the wells, at least in Huntington Drive, I'm not sure about. Are 30 feet deep. They're getting to be 40 years old. That's like the lifespan of a well. So what is going to happen? Rest of the neighborhood? And if you add too many septic tanks and we do some type of containment, who's going to save us?
Mr. Sotter, can you speak to that again about the Health Department and what they look at?
Yes, ma'am. So Health Department is a state function. It's, it's not something we ever see. So I, no one on Columbia County staff has any purview over septic systems. It's all done by the state. Uh, but they do require testing to be done. Now, where they go beyond that, I, I can't speak to. But they do require testing to be done. Ms. Fraser down there does a great job of overseeing that program. Uh, I'd have to direct you to her to get the actual answers of how they decide where they can put a septic tank. I believe they have some distance requirements on, on wells. Farmer's our chief building. That's why I looked at him for that. They do have requirements, require separation from wells to protect them, but I just can't speak to it.
But like I said, any property that has access to county water, apparently those rules...
When it comes to septic?
Well, if you don't have a well...
Right, you're not going to build a house if you don't have water.
Well, you have county hookup.
Right, if you have water.
Which means, how many septic tanks can you have?
Back to, I, I can't speak to that question. This...
Well, it is a concern for the, for the neighborhood because the authority of ever this land subdivided, there's a lot of wetland, floodplain, you know, very little is not got some type of... So... I guess my question would be, is if you, if, since this property has access to county water, does that change how it can be subdivided? It's for...
Two and a half acres. So two and a half acres in access. That's, that's what dictates it by zoning.
So whether you have a well or county water restricted to two acres?
Right now, there's some zoning, actually if you're on a septic, I believe it goes to five acres. Five acre requirement. Right. Right, so we talked about having 20 acres. Want to divide it. So if they try to get into putting more than four houses, there's, there's other requirements come in, but, but the water in the, in the septic, um, does not trigger that. On some of our smaller subdivisions, the 20,000, 40,000 R1s, septic makes a big difference. If you don't have sewer, you can't subdivide to that greater. But on RA, because you have two and a half acres is the minimum lot size, the septic is not part of that trigger, so. I'm trying to pull our maps up so I can actually look at the water lines, but I believe we're going through an upgrade right now?
Yeah.
Right now, our maps are not working.
It came down, goes a little bit down Rockford Drive because that person had a, a well failure of some kind. But was an emergency. Residents, I think, kept up to it.
I'll she, I'll talk to you afterwards and give you my phone number, and if you think of it, feel free to call me.
But I do want to say that the community that we live in, everybody's aware of what's going on. Like I said, I had a lot of things going on. I've seen the notice went across the street on Lewisville. Wanted to do the subdivision. Couldn't miss that rezoning. I never drive down the road. I would have never, ever... Zoning. I don't get a newspaper. I prefer not getting one. I'm too old. I'm expected to... But, like I said, if we can keep... Safe. Full family, way it's been for 30 years. Rockford Drive. I think it's... Question is, in the vision, how many places of areas have? Side, you need one fire station for so much. How?
You don't make decisions on it.
Whatever. So I could turn my property into...
Probably good.
Everybody in the neighborhood could.
Y'all need a little more Jesus.
Oh, in terms of what is meant by density on property, I see that where RA is very low density. I'm sorry, I searched.
You know, like the R2 area, which is, um, think, um, Weemphew Parkway, that neighborhood's in there. About two houses per acre of land. RA, you're getting one house per two and a half acres of land. That's your difference in density. Two per acre versus one per acre, plus an ancillary dwelling if someone's...
Because my calculation is that if ever was made that application, seven houses, Rockford Drive has eight houses. Seven more houses, 18% increase. That should be considered when you're talking about, are you going to keep us all in the RA zoning for low density? Or next one, which then... It's...
Thank you.
Want to make a quick note that the sign that we have to put out has to be on the property. So putting it somewhere else, like at an intersection or something, is not what the law says. The law says you have to put it on the property. That's correct. Correct. Call your congressman.
Yeah, these are state laws that we have to follow. There's, it's not laws this, this board has set.
Been through my list. Is there anyone else?
He's...
I, I beg your pardon, sir? Just very briefly, you've already, please.
That they put in?
Okay.
If you look at the colors, that's all of the different things that they presented that should have been placed together. So you would know the difference between they wanted six or eight people in a cabin, or six or 12 people in a cabin. What the applicant said they wanted, what the board said they were. So if this looks like this, somebody didn't do their homework.
Now, correct me, Matt, that, that, um, number of folks that can live in a particular house are governed by what?
Well, there's some fair housing laws. I don't know if Chris wants to speak to this. This is a legal issue. The attorney's probably going to want to...
How late do you want to go?
It, I, I read the code, sir. So with the Fair Housing Act, individuals have to be protected by the Fair Housing Act to be involved in this program.
May I clarify one point with you just for a second because you referenced Grove Town's code earlier? Can you please explain the difference between the code for Columbia County, not the particular...
Not the particular difference, but just a general overview of the differences? That there are three different codes, Grove Town, Harlem...
Yeah, so the city of Grove Town's code does not apply to this property, so it's the, Columbia County's, you know, the cities have their codes, the county has its code. So earlier you mentioned you read the Grove Town code.
Yeah, yeah, I was mistaken, it's Columbia County code.
Okay.
And with Columbia County code, 16 people or below, it's can be, can be anything. Once it's more than 16 people, regardless of what it is, it's no longer a church, it's now a group home. And...
Only one more motion that we need to make.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Favorite, raise your right hand.